I call to order the January 27, 2020 Business Meeting of the Cincinnati Board of Education. We welcome everyone and request everyone in the audience to silence your cellphones and electronic devices. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ms. Wagner, please call the roll.
Mrs. Bates?
Present.
Ms. Bolton?
Present.
Mrs. Powers?
Present.
Mr. Lindy?
Present.
Mr. Messer? Mr. Morosky?
Here.
President Jones?
Here. Thank you. I need a motion to approve the revised agenda to include two additional items, which are our committee reports on student achievement and finance.
Someone?
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Okay. And we just need to say Ms. Wagner is struggling a little bit. She has a little bit of a voice problem. So hopefully she doesn't have to talk much tonight.
Yeah, the voice replaced.
But anyway. Okay. Let's see. Roll call. If we could have a student achievement. Pam, Ms. Powers, please present January 21 student achievement report.
Alrighty. During our meeting on January 21, first election of committee chair, and I was nominated and accepted the nomination of Chair Committee for Student Achievement. We identified that we will meet the first Friday of every month at 2:00. We also talked in depth about designing our mission statement. As a recommendation by HOC, it was this ad hoc committee, it was discussed that we identify with a strategic plan and it contains the goals and the strategies of the Student Achievement Committee, which is around student-centered decision-making. So we had a lot of discussion and then at the end, the committee has actually talked about and we're going to flush out in detail more specifics around our mission. So we pushed that to February the 7th for final determination of our committee mission. The Business Advisory Council, Superintendent Mitch reported about the mission addressing career-based learning. So there was a report and data provided. Ms. Cousins identified the Business Advisory Council mandate from ODE and talked about the roles of the Business Advisory Council. She also reported that there are 16 schools that are participating in the work of the Business Advisory Council. Mr. Board Member Morosky was advised that the community do more engagement around the program and how students are securing jobs in collaboration with the Business Advisory Council. I also inquired about data, the availability of data, identifying what students are getting jobs and how we're, you know, with our three E's, how are we connecting our students after graduation with jobs in partnership with the Business Advisory Council. And Ms. Cousins explained that she was gathering more information on that. There was also some discussion about celebrating our students with employment and/or military as we do with our students graduating. And I actually inquired about that and I was informed that this happens really at the high school level. And I just don't think we make a really big enough deal about that. And I kind of highlighted that we should probably make that more notable, especially through media and on our websites about our students who are getting connected with jobs and going to the military after high school. Mr. Turner presented about career pathways and credentialing for graduation options through the career and technical education pathways. He gave us an in-depth report about the 20 different career and technical education pathways in our schools. 11 out of our 16 schools, and we're expanding to 13 out of the 16 during the next school year, 2020 to 2021. Superintendent talked about evaluation timeline for, I believe for, wait a minute, for her evaluation timeline, thank you. Ms. Williams talked about math curriculum, adoption timeline, where we are starting right now. I think we're in the process of getting requests for proposals for that. We talked about renaming the schools in specific. We talked about John Gilliam, President Gilligan, sorry. Superintendent Jones identified that, Superintendent, President Jones identified that she would like somebody from SAC to actually take the point and being a communicator to the Gilligan family. And pretty much, we had a lot on our agenda items or on our agenda. So we pushed some items to our February 7 conversation as priority. And basically, that is our sacred.
Okay. And you don't have to move. You're just presenting.
No, I'm presenting to record the minutes of this report.
Okay. Anyone have any comments or questions on the student achievement report? Okay, thank you. Ms. Bates, please present the January 21 Health and Safety Committee meeting report.
Very first Health and Safety Committee report.
Drumroll.
And I was elected chair. Thank you, committee members, very much. And much of what we discussed will be discussed a little bit later on in our work on the protocol because our work was pretty much figuring out what we were going to discuss and work on as a Health and Safety Committee. So that will come before the board for approval by way of the bylaws. So that will come a little later in the agenda. And we also discussed the alignment with the pedestrian safety committees because there are at least three other committees we know of that are meeting to discuss this very, you know, very difficult problem we have in our city. And that is around the safety of our students and our citizens while going about their business on our roadways. So the decision was by the committee, or the recommendation was by the committee, that these committees shall continue with their work because we have people engaged in our district in solving this problem. And each seems to be working on a particular niche of this problem. And that the district will be primarily working on the safe routes to school. But Sarah Trimble Oliver will also receive reports from these committees so that we know what's going on and can kind of align the work with ours to make sure that the changes that are needed to be made, that we can either make ourselves or advocate for to improve pedestrian safety occur. So I present this report as printed for acceptance.
Thank you. Any questions or comments on that report?
Just one quick comment.
Yes, Mr. Morosky.
Thank you, President Jones. Chair Bates, I love it. I thought you all did some nice work at an inaugural meeting of a committee that didn't really have much form to begin because we didn't approve the bylaws yet. So I thought it was awesome. And I just wanted to remind the committee that there is an email list for folks of like the three or four different pedestrian safety groups that Phyllis Davis has. So if and when you're ready to get them, it's a nice diverse group of folks. Obviously, more people want to be involved. And I also would just like to say that I liked the suggestion of renaming the Policy Committee to the Policy and Equity Committee. That might be something to chew on. I thought those are really interesting suggestions for the committees, honestly, as we sort of tighten up ship, so.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, Ms. Bolton, please present the January 21 Finance Committee meeting.
Thank you. We, first of all, significantly, the administration was able to receive and the committee got to hear a presentation by State Senator Lou Blessing, oh, excuse me, my bad. Lou Blessing Jr., I think. State Senator came and briefed us, and we'll reference it a number of times in the minutes. But it was a great get on Thursday to have him attend and share with us his concerns and help us be better informed. And we really, really appreciated it. We elected the chair, and I'm proud to say that I was fortunate enough to be elected. Thank you, members of the committee. The schedule was selected for the third Thursday of each month at 1:30 PM. We had great news provided by our treasurer regarding the Moody's report, if you will. And the Moody's report, it's called Moody's Investors Service, presented. And I would hope that the treasurer will be able to update us when we get to updates, perhaps, or right before her treasurer's report. And again, great news, very good news about our credit rating and the other things that Moody's does as well. We had additional treasurer update and showed no particular anomalies or exceptions. And the committee has received a number of charts that validate and substantiate the positions that the treasurer has taken. We had also not only our own district information financially, but also the CPS kind of version of preschool expansion. At the same time, of course, as we always have, Mr. Polanco report from Preschool Promise Finances. He reported year-to-date reflects an underspending of approximately $143,000, which has improved as compared to previous years. So we're starting to catch up on some of the underspend as we figure out where the clients and the market actually are. He also updated the group on the budget versus actual spending for a number of students receiving tuition assistance. He reported that some categories show improvement in enrollment, others show exact alignment to the budget. And that is, an actual base of enrollment is lower than we would like to anticipate. And our new executive director of Preschool Promise has decided, rightfully so, to increase their efforts regarding marketing. I think the treasurer gave me her voice issue. Mr. Polanco also is worried about the underspend. Member Bates talked a bit about how we can increase the preschool classes. On the east side, the treasurer reported additions, yeah, additions regarding the west side. Must have something to do with finances. We lose our voice. But most importantly, as we mentioned earlier, Senator Blessing spoke with the committee about private Ed Choice vouchers. He informed the committee, thank you, about Matt Dolan's amendment to the Ed Choice voucher, which was, could be catastrophic without that amendment. Previously, it's only been 270 schools in the state that have been susceptible to losing students. And with the initial budget for this particular year, which we think has now been adjusted as a result of weekend work, it would move from 270 schools in the state of Ohio to where 1,270 schools would now be susceptible to the voucher, how should we call it, retreat, departure, whatever you want to call it. Just means that more public money is going to non-public schools. The senator also continued to say time was of the essence. And I think when we do update, I have asked general counsel to perhaps be able to give us a bit of an update on the specificity of some of the issues that have arisen regarding the voucher. Senator Blessing importantly agreed that the current state report card is flawed. And the fact that we make so many policy decisions and financial decisions based upon that flawed state report card is something that needs to be corrected. So we are really getting our southwestern Ohio Republicans and Democrats in our legislature to start to see and work towards a correction of that. Financial audit update was presented. Things look very good regarding the financial update. Insurance rates are going up significantly as reported by General Counsel Hoyn. Comprehensive, the CAFER, which is the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, was presented by Mr. Ashley, who is part of our financial reporting office under the treasurer. We have no financial policies for review at this time. And then ad hoc committee, a number of things that we did, we agreed with the ad hoc committee recommendation that the number five issue in our strategic plan, growth, would reside with the, its initial work in any way, would reside with the finance committee. I suggested that the finance committee's name be changed to Budget, Finance, and Growth Committee because of that. And then also, there's issue of where we might, as we adjust for these new committees and keep the old committees, where growth in preschool might go, since it is such a financial issue rather than necessarily an instructional issue. We also have something we need to talk about as a board either tonight or later on about a possibility that the government liaisons, Mr. Kearney and Mr. Glover, who are kind of our lobbyists, that's been in the purview of the finance committee. We have a difference of opinion on the finance committee as to whether or not that topic and that work should reside with finance, or indeed, it should become perhaps an administrative committee to which board members could attend. And there's some discussion about that that might be of interest to us. But the whole board will have to help decide that. We did talk too about the tax abatement issue. And again, Mr. Hoyn, our general counsel, is looking into how you create a TERC, which is Tax Incentive Review Commission. And Ms. Bates, Member Bates, will be particularly responsible for looking into that. And anybody that wants to be on that committee, the names will be submitted to Ms. Bates. A review committee of the work plan, we'll be talking about that and making certain decisions to be recommended to the full board at our February meeting. The last few pages of our minutes are a summary of the legislative items that are before us that were provided to us by Mr. Kearney and Mr. Glover. And again, we are particularly thankful for the attendance of Senator, State Senator Lewis Blessing. I submit for a hope of acceptance.
Thank you. I need a motion to approve the...
I have some comments.
Oh, can I get to discussion first? I was going to introduce the motion in second and then open for discussion.
Oh, okay.
Okay. I need a motion to accept the committee minutes. Is there a second discussion?
Yes. I wanted to add a couple of things to the finance, not to the report, but to the business of the finance committee, in particular, the legislative business that occurred after the meeting that I want the committee and the board to be aware of. One is that I was contacted by George Glover, one of our legislative liaisons, after the meeting. And he thought the meeting with Senator Blessing went so well, he asked how we would feel about scheduling other legislators into our finance committee meeting to discuss matters. And I took it upon myself to say, they are welcome. But I wanted to let you know that I made that comment. And if there's any dissent, which I don't think there would be, you know, if we can have legislators in our building, talking to us, our administrators, and the public that comes to our meetings, I think that's a great thing. So I took the liberty of speaking and saying, yes, I think that would be a good thing if we had more legislators come to our meeting for these kinds of discussions. So the other thing that I wanted you to know about or focus on is, and you mentioned this in the minutes, we received an email today, a joint email from OSBA, OASBO, and BASSA encouraging school districts to advocate for and contact legislators for the, in favor of the Dolan Amendment. So I asked our legal counsel to take a look at that during this part of the meeting until we get to resolutions. So if we wanted to amend Mr. Morosky's resolution and add particulars, we could do that. You know, Mr. Hoyn isn't sure whether or not he could come up with something for us to add at this time because this is kind of late notice. But as we found out from Senator Blessing, this is moving along very, very quickly.
Are you speaking of the resolution around the Ed Choice voucher?
Right.
The Dolan, is that what you're referring to?
Right, because the Ed Choice voucher resolution is very broad. And now, as of today, we're being asked to address this issue very specifically. So Mr. Hoyn will research that as best as he can, probably in the next 20 minutes. Right, Mr. Hoyn?
Okay. Thank you.
You'll have about 30.
This probably be more appropriate later, I would imagine. But I think it's germane now since it came up. I'm more than amenable to adding Senator Matt Dolan's, support rather, for Senator Matt Dolan's amendment. I mean, as Ms. Bates said, all of the organizations of which were members have recommended it. It seems solid enough. And it is literally late-breaking sort of news. Ideally, some fix will happen by tomorrow, the earliest anyway, irrespective of the resolution. But if we could get maybe some new language, that'd be great. So I'm amenable to that.
Yes. And based on what, I attended the meeting also, and it felt like that meeting was so helpful in sort of helping us better understand where things are. And I certainly support having legislators come down and meet with us if possible. So, yeah, I would support that as well. Okay.
May I make a technical, correction, a technical addition to the minutes? There was still some confusion as to how far along the revised and what I think is adopted Preschool Workforce Development Council charter is. I believe it was in previous finance minutes. I know it's been before the administration. We know that it's gone before the Work Council, the Development Council. And I just wanted to double check. And I didn't know if it should be an assignment or just a mention right now and maybe save for an assignment, just to double check that we have done what we're supposed to do in passing that charter. I have some confusion. So I'm assuming that I didn't present it properly a couple of months ago or last month. But if we can do that as an assignment, please help me remember that. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Any other discussion? I did want to make, I wanted to ask for clarification as we move to accept the minutes. I think I'm, I want to suggest that we approve the minutes for recording and filing of the minutes, given that we're still waiting on the ad hoc action to be approved. And considering that all the conversation and the work that's being done in these committees hasn't been finalized, it's good work. I think all the committees did a good job in trying to lay out their landscape and their work plans. But we probably need to have at least one more meeting with the subcommittees to kind of bring that together. So could we just say that the motion is to approve the minutes for recording of the minutes? And then pending the, if we need final approval, we would have to bring it back for final approval.
I'd be very supportive of that, not only to wait for ad hoc to help determine it, but indeed for the respective committees to negotiate or at least find consensus among between us as to who's doing what.
Okay. So that is, that is the motion to accept them as recording of the minutes. And further discussion amongst the committees will occur. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Minutes are approved as recorded. Thank you. Okay. Anyone have any kudos? I always look at the kudo man.
I'll give a kudo.
Okay.
I give a kudos hot off the heels of the preschool educators' recognition event at which Ms. Jones spoke and the superintendent and Ms. Brooks, our early education director in the audience, and Char Fisher-Jackson, the new executive director of the Preschool Promise. It was an awesome event. I'm going to be talking about early learning later on in the agenda a couple times. And we know that our preschool educators are some of the most important and oftentimes, some of the most underappreciated educators. It's a hard job and it's an important job when somewhat 80% of their kids' brains are forming before age five. So it was great to recognize them. And I'd ask, I don't do this often, but a round of applause for our early education teachers that get our kids ready for school. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morosky. Any other kudos? Okay, Ms. Bates, no retirement?
We have no retirements.
Okay, wonderful.
We get to keep everybody.
We get to keep everybody. Alrighty. Okay, we are now at the item on our agenda for hearing the public. Each speaker has three minutes to speak. And Ms. Wagner will be our timekeeper. When the buzzer goes off, your three minutes are up. Please refrain from discussing any personnel items. When your name is called, please come to the podium. We have one speaker, one. Liz Baker.
Good evening. And thank you for giving me a few moments to share tonight. My name is Liz Baker. I have four children at Hyde Park School, a fourth grader, second grader, kindergartner, and future kindergartner. So one of us is not there yet. As you know, we are asking the board to make a decision about expanding our wonderful but crowded school. My daughter, Maribel, second grade, crosses a very busy intersection on a state route twice every day to get to her classroom in an auxiliary space across the street from her school. The rooms she and her 75 second grade friends walk to are too small for their active wiggly bodies. When I told Maribel I would be here tonight, she said, "Tell them that when the furniture gets in there, it's just too tight of a squeeze." So that's from her. But if you came to visit our school at 8:00 on a weekday morning and watched these seven-year-olds cross the street, you'd be really proud and impressed with what a good job they do. They stay focused to get across quickly. But you'd also think, "We can do better than this. They shouldn't have to do this." As a parent, I often think that all it would take is one distracted driver for this daily crossover to end in tragedy. One driver answering a phone call, changing their song on Spotify, or handing a pacifier back to their crying baby in the backseat. We've all been there, right? We've all been that distracted driver. And it would just take one of those to needlessly endanger our children. As a board, you have the opportunity to be proactive to prevent this from even being a concern for future parents at Hyde Park School. You have the power to provide our brilliant, funny, hardworking, and precious kids with the space they need to learn and thrive. Thank you for considering this and for making a decision, not in response to an accident or injury, but to prevent that from even being a possibility. Thank you for your time. My children also requested a zip line, but I told them that that might not be within your jurisdiction.
Thank you. We might have to consider that, right? Thank you. Okay. All right, our presentation by our superintendent.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So I'm going to be joined at the podium by some hardworking students from Rockdale Elementary. Yes. So tonight, I have the privilege of recognizing the amazing team of individuals, our Cincinnati Board of Education. What makes this team so special is... So, tonight I have the privilege of recognizing the amazing team of individuals, our Cincinnati Board of Education. What makes this team so special is their commitment to communities and their passion for ensuring that our students have the best possible education, and I am so very proud to be able to serve with this Board of Education. In the last year, this board ushered in the development of a new strategic plan, which launched this school year, which empowers our next generation of community leaders to be world influencers. Over the course of last school year, the board worked many, many hours with the community in the development of the strategic plan along with the design team. Over the last several years, this board has always been an advocate for resources for our students to provide the very best possible education for them. This brings to mind the negotiations our board entered into with FC Cincinnati and which they provided a strong united front, which led to the development and creation of a state-of-the-art $10 million stadium, Stargol Stadium, which was dedicated at the beginning of this school year. As a result of the hard work and effective work of the board, the enrollment of the district has been steadily growing. We were projected to by this time have between 26,000 and 28,000 kids and we sit above 36,000 students today. And as a result of that growth, the board opened Spencer Center, Leap Academy, as well as this school year, Gamble Montessori Elementary, and welcomed Gamble High School into a new home at our new campus, Mercy. It was also this board's wisdom and social justice that really pushed them to make a strong commitment to equity. And so, in 2016, the board passed a resolution and policy around equity within our district, which again shows a commitment to not only our kids, but our communities as a whole. This board also ushered in under equity, more advanced placement courses, as well as Vision 2020 for elementary neighborhood schools. I think one of the things that really illustrates that the board is effective is that the public has a belief in the board, to the tune of 71% of the voters who came out this fall voted in favor of the tax levy. So, we are so proud to be able to recognize our board members who do so much for our kids and our communities every single day. So, here they are. First, we have Board President Carolyn Jones, who has been a member since 2016. She is a proud graduate of Hughes High School.
Woo!
She owns, has a bachelor's and a master's degree from University of Cincinnati and is retired from Hamilton County Mental Health and Recovery Service Board. A little fun fact is that she played fast pitch softball for 25 years and coached for 10 years. Board President Carolyn Jones.
Thank you.
Next, I want to introduce our vice president of the board, Ryan Messer. He has been a board member since 2018. He is a graduate of Rising Sun High School in Indiana. He's also a graduate of Purdue University and is employed by Johnson &amp; Johnson, and a fun fact, he is a recipient of the Indiana Governor's Fellowship in 1995. And we have our longest-standing board member, board member Melanie Bates, who has been a member since 2002. She is a graduate of Sandusky St. Mary's High School, Xavier University for a bachelor's, Northern Kentucky University for a master's, and she is retired from the Life Center Organ Donor Network. She also previously served on the Ohio State Board of Education from 1995 through 2001 and, as I stated, is the longest-serving board member, and we're honored to have her. Thank you. Eve Bolton has been a member since 2008. She is a proud graduate of Aiken High School.
Swoop!
College of Worcester, she has a bachelor's degree. She is a retired teacher from the Wyoming School District, and fun fact, if you didn't know, she loves all things Aiken.
It's about Aiken, yes.
Next, we have board member Pamela Bowers, who has been a member since 2019, a graduate of Mount Healthy High School, Fisk University for a bachelor's, Tennessee State for a master's. She is currently employed with Central Clinic Behavioral Science and, health, I'm sorry, and she is an adjunct professor with Chatfield College. And last but not, oh, not last but not least. All right, next, we have our newest board member, Mr. Ben Lindy, who was, who just actually took office this month. He is a graduate of Wanted Hills High School.
Legal.
Yes, as well as Yale University for a bachelor's and a law degree. He was formerly employed by Teach for America, and a fun fact, he is learning how to play the guitar.
Wonderful.
All right, last but not least, we have board member Mike Morosky, who has been a board member since 2018. He is a graduate of Marist High School in Atlanta, Georgia. He's also a graduate of Xavier University for a bachelor's, master's, University of Notre Dame for a master's degree, is employed with Cradle Cincinnati, and he serves as a trustee for Camp Joy, and I would believe that about our board member Mike Messer, I mean, Mike Morosky, because he loves to have fun.
Yes.
And support kids, so thank you. All right, so we have some darling kids from Rockdale, and they have prepared some wonderful things to present to each and every one of you.
Hi, my name is Lorena Peert and I am in the fifth grade. Today, we would like to present to you some gifts from our Rockdale Academy Art Club. We would like to thank you for all you do for our schools.
Hello. Hello, my name is Andrea Peert and I am in the fifth grade. Today, we would like to tell you about how we made the gifts that we are presenting you now. So, basically, we first started off with foam, a foam piece of plate, and then we wrote on it with pen, and then we colored it with marker, and then we took a blank piece of paper, we wet it with a sponge, and then we put the foam, the foam plate on the paper, and then we rolled it out with a marker, and then after that, we put it in picture frames.
Also, we would like to present to you a coaster that we have painted and presented to you. On the back, you could see a felt, piece of felt, so it would not scrape your desks. And we made those coasters for you, so you, your desk would, so your desks will not, like, get stained.
My name's James Neville, and I'm the art teacher at Rockdale Academy. I have all four of these young ladies in class, several of them also in art club once a week after school, and this was a really fun project for the kids that participated in it. They, for the print that Andrea was talking about, they, I talked to them about like imagery and things that make them think of education, and then also in their own education, what type of stuff do you like at school? And some of them have math stuff, some of them have science stuff, so if you look on yours, it has some sort of thing in there. Also, in your bags, there are, is a thank you card from Rockdale and our Rockdale bucks, the highly coveted $20 Ms. Wallace bucks, so.
First live.
Yeah. And we just want to say thank you for all that you do.
Oh, wow. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you for all your service.
Thank you. Maybe board members want to have a comment, but I want to say this first. I got here about 20 minutes early and Ms. Vicki, where is she at? Is that, Ms. Vicki was sitting there with two of her girls, and I said, "I'm going to go over and introduce myself," which we introduced, and I said, "So, what brings you here tonight?" You know? And I told her I was glad to see her and the kids, and she said, "Oh, we're just here to see what's going on." So, you kept a good secret, Ms. Vicki. Thank you. Pleasant surprise. And I just want to thank these ladies. This, you don't know how much this means to us. The gifts that you all give to us, I cherish those, and you would, if you were to come in my office, back in the back office, the board office, and at home, you will see gifts from students everywhere, and I love them, so thank you so much. So, do board, other board members? Yes, Mr. Morosky? Before you go, can I just come out and hug you guys? Can I hug you guys? Oh.
Here she goes. She's coming.
She's coming. She's, she's a hugger.
Whether you want it or not, you ought to hug Ms. Bowers.
Yeah.
I love it.
That's sweet. She's hugging for all of us. Thank you. Mr. Morosky?
I just want to thank you all so much, and just so you know, it's a real honor and pleasure to be able to sit up here and to try to make sure that you have all that you need at Rockdale, and I really, really appreciate the gifts that you made for us. And something that's really cool, that you could have never known, but it's really cool, is my wife is five weeks away from giving birth to our first child, and our baby's room is yellow.
Oh.
And I got the yellow piece of art with, and I'm glad it's got math symbols on it because this child's dad was an English teacher, so we need to remind them that math is important too. So, thank you so much, and if you ever have anything you want us to know, always know that you can get ahold of us, okay? And I have one question, but it's not for you, it's for your principal, and I hope she can. What can I spend my Rockdale bucks on?
Anything during the end of the quarter. Those are special bucks only for principal incentives, so.
Have 40 bucks.
Forty dollars.
Okay. We'll see you then.
All right, Ms. Wallace, I'll see you.
Or lunch with the principal.
Thank you so much, y'all, and thank you, sir. This is great. Obviously, you're an awesome teacher. This art is great, you're, this is all fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments, board members? Ms. Bates?
Yes, oh, I love it. This is going in my living room. These are just gorgeous, and like Ms. Jones, the art and gifts that we get from our students are all over my home and my office, and it just reminds me of you all every day. And to your principal, I got the message loud and clear that I'm overdue for a visit. So, I will be visiting and I can't wait to see these wonderful students again and your staff, and thank you so much for what you all do and how hard you all study because you students make the board look good.
Yeah, absolutely. We'll go down the line. Mr. Lindy?
So, wanted to add my thanks as well and share two things. The first is I have a five-year-old son whose favorite subject in school is art, and so he will be delighted, and I think we'll give him a cool idea of neat things he can look up to and work towards, so, thank you. And second, this dovetails with my colleagues, but you all are thanking us, and I would just offer that we have that backwards, that I think it's really an incredible privilege to get to meet wonderful kids like you all and teachers and administrators and to try to do what we can to do right by kids. So, thank you for the chance to do that.
Ms. Bolton?
Yes, definitely, I want to say always, I say swoop every time I get a chance about Aiken, and of course, the principal is a graduate of Aiken, thank you very much, but more importantly, I think I say the next thing the most time besides swoop is that Rockdale rocks, and you really do, and we are so proud of everything you do, and I want everybody that's down there in the blue Rockdale shirts to really know how much we love you and respect you, but that your neighbors do too. This city values you and has every hope and expectation that you're going to be a great rep for Rockdale and a great rep for CPS, and we're probably looking at a couple of valedictorians and salutatorians right now. So, thank you so much.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
All right. Well, we, again, we thank you so much, and I agree that we really should be thanking you, but thank you so much for giving your time tonight, and just in closing, I went to Rockdale when I was your age.
Yeah.
Okay.
Rockdale rocks.
Yes, Rockdale rocks, right. Thank you again. Thank you, ladies. I know. We'd be here for a half hour if Ozzy was here. Okay, all right. Checking to see if superintendent is. All right, thank you, thank you. So, we're going to move on with the items under our board matters agenda. We have three items. The first item is regarding the tax abatement discussion that we're having with the city, and the intent of that is to really, I think, last week, we talked about where things were. We know that City Council is meeting on Wednesday, I believe. I'm asking for board members Wednesday.
I believe that's correct.
So, I, just to have a little bit discussion about our next steps, what our intentions are, what are we expecting of this meeting? So, if folks want to talk a little bit about that, I know we talked about showing up as one thing, but maybe we want to also speak at their hearing of the public. Mr. Morosky?
Thank you, President Jones. I spoke with Mayor Cranley, who as the public and everyone is aware, we reached an agreement with. He seemed to think that the next time the topic would be taken up seriously would be in budget and finance, which would be next Monday at 1:00 p.m., to which I would encourage, if that is the case.
It's going to be canceled, I'm sure.
Why?
It's during Mr. Portun's funeral.
That's right. Well, so, budget and finance, you're right, Ms. Bates, what she said, Commissioner Portune, the late Commissioner Portune's funeral and service will be at the Duke Energy Center at that time at noon, so it likely would get moved. So, that being the case, I think it's fair to assume that, but the mayor seemed to intimate that it would be taken up in budget and finance, to which I would respond, I think it's incumbent upon us to ensure, yeah, that not only we're there, but we have a lot of parents. Just real quick, nudge, nudge, wink, wink, there's some Hyde Park School parents out there and other parents in this district that are looking for funding that we want to be able to provide, and this 33% is extremely tied and relevant to those asks. And so, the more parents we can get, yes, the activists that are always there and have our back, but the more parents we can get rallied around it, I think would be helpful. That'd be my two cents.
So, clarification, are you saying that the Wednesday meeting is where you would suggest that we show up or at the Budget and Finance Committee whenever it's scheduled?
Yeah, I, so, I would, I would, for a number of reasons, trust the mayor's intuition, A, because he's shown that he supports our kids, and I would imagine he has a better idea of when it'll be talked about, at least than I do. So, he seemed to think budget and finance would be a good time to show up and act, but I don't think it's bad to show up Wednesday, tomorrow, Thursday, Friday, you get the point.
Okay. Ms. Bolton?
Yes, I would suggest that prior to Commissioner Portune's passing, I think there was an interest by the mayor as well to have testimony by supporters of ours at Wednesday's meeting. It cannot be voted on, I believe, by their procedures on Wednesday that has to, like us, has to go through committee, but I would make sure, if I think it's reasonable, and maybe we can double-check, that Wednesday would be a good time for us to testify and be there and actually get more of our community supporters, not just us, because God knows they know where we stand on this, and that And that then also attend the, the finance meeting. Because it'll have to go through finance to get to the full, and that might be delayed now. But I would do at least this Wednesday and then the next finance committee. I think that makes sense. I would also, and maybe this is the right time or not the right time, but again, where we left all this and where, where we decided things continues to be a unanimous decision regarding the 33%. And that indeed, if, besides the 33%, that there be that five, that five-year length and that there be this combined work group that President Jones has talked about where there's mutual agreement. I would also suggest, too, that it, I think we have to, I'm going to use the word debunk, but I, I think it's important that perhaps the treasurer can help us understand what it means to have the administration of the city believe that a 5% will make us whole versus what we have said a 33%. And if the treasurer's so able to do that even in dollar amounts, I think it will communicate to the public that we're not even close and that it's almost absurd to think in terms of a 3% versus the, the 5% versus a 33%. So if, if the chair is willing, I'd like to request the treasurer to talk a little bit about what that means in dollar amounts historically and moving forward. Is that all right with the chair?
Ms. Wack?
So forgive my voice. At 33%, our revenues would generate about $29 million on, in pilot payments. At 5%, it would generate about 4.4 million. So it's a 20, almost a $25 million gap. And I honestly have no idea how they came up with 5%. So I can't explain their logic. It would be devastating.
Yeah, go ahead.
Could I ask a question, too, then? Over the last few years, what has been sort of, including and then without the $5 million that was part of the 20-year agreement, what has been the income, the revenue as a result of those pilots?
So at 25%, we generated about $18 million a year. Well, it's been growing because of the number of projects that have grown. The TIF payments were about 17 million in addition to the $5 million from the city. Not to mention the, the fact that we absorbed the city nurse payment and the crossing guards, $2.5 million.
So thinking in terms of what 5% produces versus what 33% and the history of the amounts during this time period of this agreement, our estimate, your estimate, and the state expert that we hired and had consulting with us, it's a significant difference in that what brings us actually closer to what's been the recent history, not including the fact that the city used to pay for the nurses, pay for the crossing guards and, and what have you. The 33% is closer to the recent history of what's been produced or generated as revenue?
It's closer than 5%, yes.
Yes. Okay.
So that, in recent history, in addition to the $5 million, you had the $5 million plus the money that we collected is closer to that 33%. That's correct.
Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Bates?
Yes, we all know in our five-year forecast, we don't have money for growth. Our growth is going to come if we are able to collect tax money that we are due, especially pilot payments from this agreement, or if we don't have an agreement for the negotiations we have independently with the developers. So my section, suggestion, and you know, we're talking about going to City Hall and, you know, signing up. And, and I know we have a lot of support from our union and CEJC, but every week we get people from Hyde Park Elementary, Pleasant Ridge, Montessori, the Eastern Corridor, you know, telling us about their plight and how they really need expansion. And so my ask to you is that you come with us and sign up to speak with council and tell them what's going on in your neighborhood and the need to make sure that the district receives their, their, the appropriate funding that is due us so we can do these things for you in Hyde Park and Pleasant Ridge and the Eastern Corridor. And if you would like to help coordinate this, you could get in touch with really any one of our, the board members that you feel most comfortable in speaking with to find out who's going down and, you know, what, what would be a good two-minute presentation to make on behalf of your LSDMC or community council. I think that would help us a lot.
Right. Well, I think, let's just ask, are, are board members planning on going? Who on the board is planning on attending?
I'm out of town. Are you around?
You going, Ms. Bolton? Mr. Lindy, are you, will you be able to go?
I'm working on it, but not sure yet.
Okay. Ms. Bowers, Mr. Morosky?
It'd be difficult for me, but I've already reached out to some friends in the areas you talked about to encourage. And if they can't go, pass it along to other parents.
Okay.
I can make it. I had planned on going on Monday to the Budget and Finance, but I, yeah, I don't think that's probably going to happen anymore.
Okay. And, and I plan on going. So we have at least three defendants and possibly four. I haven't talked to Mr. Messer, who is out of town, so we can talk. But I, I, I agree with the suggestion that we need to go and, as well as need to go to the Budget and Finance Committee meeting when that's scheduled. So, Ms. Bolton?
Madam Chair, do we? And, and I, you know, we got very tired of passing letters back and forth, but there probably needs to be some sort of formal communication regarding where we still are, if we haven't sent that most recently. And also to Ms. Bates' earlier point last week and in Finance Committee as well, again reiterating that if we cannot make ourselves whole this way based upon our request of the city and, and those items, that indeed, we will have our own Turk.
Yes.
And developers will simply have to come to us to get what they need, as well as the city.
Well, we can do that in a formal letter and we, we can assign it, or we can go up and each one of us is going to say something about that. I know, I certainly was planning on it.
Okay. Whatever we all think is best, as long as it's formalized and in some way and communicated directly. It's my understanding is that, that, and this is sometimes wrong to say this, but at least we have more than a fighting chance to make our case again, especially when you talk in terms of the dollar piece. The 5% was simply an outrage. And we did not see the numbers. We did not see the work. We did not see the equations. Our treasurer was asked to present it and present it earlier than the meeting by a week. We've yet to see the city's equation or math or arithmetic. So I think that this will help, if nothing else, the dollar amount to make it very clear.
Yes. We did send them a formal notice, though, when we had that discussion last time. That was pretty definitive, that 33%, five years, annual audit, and...
The working group and Turk.
Working group. We did do that.
Okay, great.
So I don't, personally, I don't feel the need to do it again.
Okay.
I feel like we go down and we say what we say and...
I'm perfectly ready to keep it at that record, but that they need to know that that has not changed in a week.
Right. Okay. Any other messages or discussion? Okay. So moving on, Ms. Bates, you want to talk to us about, present the ad hoc report?
Yes. And you received your packet on Friday. And I wanted to have a discussion today. I know that there were areas, and I can point them out, where the committee discussed, you know, about having the full board come to a conclusion about the addition of some of the responsibilities of some of the committees. This really isn't set in stone. And, you know, particularly, one was the responsibilities of the Health and Safety Committee. We discussed resource coordinators and community learning centers, the whole child. And as Ms. Bolton discussed, moving legislative out of finance and into an administrative committee. So those, I think in particular, I'd, I'd ask you first to look at the responsibilities of the Health and Safety Committee because it's pretty important that we get this committee rolling with the appropriate agenda. But again, there may be some discussion from the current Student Achievement Committee because you'll be relinquishing these agenda items. And we have to make sure there's agreement between the two committees, that the burden is, is evenly shared.
Right. Any discussion or questions? Ms. Bolton?
I, I, I think that that's very good advice. And I think that all committees, and it wouldn't bother me if some dialogue among or between the chairs took place in anticipation of each committee's agenda. But I think it's the committees that have to kind of figure that out among themselves, not only from the strategic plan, but also from what has been historically their work plans of the committees. Because some of those, to Ms. Bates' point, some of those work plans, I know it's true in finance, I know it's true in SAC, since that sort of initiated the whole thing, some of those don't need to be on there and some of them need to remain. I still have a strong feeling about social emotional, but I think there's a good case to be made to move it to Health and Safety as well. So I think that's sort of a dialogue. I do have, and I, I don't mean to emphasize this too much, but I, I do have some things I'd like to not necessarily share here tonight, but handout, if you will, a teacher, remember that, a handout regarding some of the changes on, by page or paragraph in the current bylaws. I have some comments on page, about page one and page nine and 10, 13, 23, 26, 29, 30, and 31 and 33. I think most of the changes are well-advised, but I have more clarifying language I'd like to, because that's where the, the confusion is really about how we, the process.
Right.
And so I'm happy to not talk about that tonight, but share what I've written down so people could review it possibly, or willing, bless you, to talk about it tonight as well, whatever the chair thinks we should do.
Ms. Bates?
Yeah, can we ask Ms. Bruckner, she's been doing the, most of the revisions on this for us, can you submit those to Ms. Bruckner and have her blue line them so we know that they're your suggestions?
Yes.
And we can review that?
I'm more than happy to do that. Ms. Bruckner's always so sad to see me walking toward her desk. But yes, and then I can also give you guys hard copies of it if you, just for your own edification.
Yeah.
As well as her clear, making the text look proper.
I, I, I just want to comment. I, I really appreciate the work that not only ad hoc did, and you're trying to move it along quickly so that the committees can begin to function. And I also appreciate the work that the committees did. And I agree with Ms. Bolton that the process needs to be a little more refined, just in terms of aligning across the committees. So I certainly would urge the committee chairs to come together to do a greater alignment of it. Actually, I have few complaints. And I know you have been hearing a lot of complaints from me for a while. But I, I don't have a lot of, anything to add really to this, but I think once the chairs have a chance to cross-check and align, it, I think we'll have what we, what we want. I also, though, would encourage that, you know, I, I hear from board members all the time, our role is oversight. I get that. Okay? But I also think that we need to invite the superintendent and treasurer who sit at every committee to help us identify what areas, like they did with the Student Achievement Committee report, where they identify areas where, of operation, so we don't get into the weeds of what they think is their job. So I think that making sure that they're at the table in the committee meetings or with the chairs, wherever that's happening, so that we can make sure that we better understand their perspective on it as well.
Madam Chair, if I could add to that? I think the great worry that certainly the administration might develop, and certainly I've already kind of seen, is that it's very possible that four committees actually increases the administration's work, largely because we are able as a board to touch on more subjects than we were able to with just three committees. So I think the length of the lists and the coherent list, coherence is needed in the listing and in the jurisdiction.
Well, and maybe...
Because it also is divided, it also has now divided the number of, divided the number of administrators that may serve on each committee.
Yeah.
So that concentrates the work on two instead of three, or however that works. So I think we, we need to keep that in mind. And, and I, I think some of, maybe this might, some of these ideas might help. Also, Clarita?
Yeah, I, I, I don't disagree with that. I do think, however, and I'm going back to the document that Student Achievement had in their work plan. I thought it, for me, it was very helpful to see that the superintendent had gone through and kind of helped the committee identify where, the areas of operation that, that they felt like were in their purview. And I, I don't want to increase their workload, per se, but, but I do think that it's important that, that we try to achieve some balance in, in what our oversight is and what their, their oversight is. And so that's, that's where I'm coming.
I would also add that one of the biggest helps, because we don't know it, is them creating a calendar for each individual's committee work plan. We don't know when we have to consider what part of the budget or when the, you know, the, the curriculum timeframe is or what the law requires regarding the superintendent's evaluation or the treasurer's. So they're tremendous help on that. And when you look at the calendar, that's also another good way to start to limit what we're doing. But I think we all start with the strategic plan.
Okay. I, I think we're in a good place, right?
And I'll have Ms. Bruckner go through.
Ms. Bruckner?
Yes.
You're assigned. Okay. All right. Anything else regarding that subject, that, that agenda item? Okay. Groundwork Ohio's Ready Set Sore Campaign. Who, Mr. Morosky?
That was me. I don't know, remember putting it on Board Matters? Did you put it on Board Matters? Or did, okay. Yeah. No. I thought so, okay. So I, I probably did put it on there, because I know I sent a document to the superintendent, but when I saw it on there, I was like, why? But for the board's edification, so I was recently appointed to the advisory board for Groundwork Ohio, which...
Oh, my gosh.
I know. That could have been one of my fun facts. Groundwork Ohio, in case you don't know, is a statewide effort to bring all kinds of entities together to reemphasize and emphasize the importance of early learning. Its executive director is Shannon Jones, who is a term-limited state senator and House of Representatives. She currently is a Warren County Commissioner and was pretty part and parcel of making the governor's race about education and kids and getting Cordray and Dewine to sign off on that, Ohio is for future. I just put a bow on that real quick. So Ready Set Sore Ohio is, is their new campaign. And basically, it's not fully baked yet. What I have in front of me is a draft. But essentially, it's a diverse statewide coalition of early childhood education, health, advocacy, philanthropy, business, community policymakers, families, coalitions committed to ensuring that more pregnant women, infants, and toddlers and families have access and support they need to be ready to set and soar to their full potential. So something the district's already sort of taken on through the expansion of our early education, preschool promise, et cetera. I had sent it to the superintendent initially because Public School District Toledo just signed off. All it really honestly requires is a logo. I know Children's Hospital, Cradle, Cincinnati did. They just want to have logos of all these, these people support early ed statewide. So if that was something we'd be amenable to, or if you think it's more of a discretion of the superintendent, just bring it up and put it out there. It's a fairly innocuous thing to say we care about kids and do we want our logo on... It's a fairly innocuous thing to say we care about kids and do we want our logo on there to help push that statewide agenda. So Toledo just signed up, like I said, and has wanted to bring it before us to see people sign it.
Okay. Ms. Bates?
Can we just have an executive summary of what this group is about?
Yeah. So yeah, Groundwork Ohio, again, they are the statewide advocacy organization for early childhood policy from birth to five. They do a lot of advocacy at the State House for Education. It's nonpartisan.
Excuse me, Mr. Morosky?
What?
I think she's asking for written, but I mean if you could-
Oh, written, sure.
Yeah.
This isn't part of the state, this is a nonprofit, you know, all that kind of thing.
Correct.
It would be good to know before we sign off.
Okay.
And maybe, maybe what we can do is you send us an executive summary-
Sure.
And then if we want to put it back on the agenda for the next meeting-
Sure, cool.
To have more conversation.
Okay.
That'd be great.
Cool, thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Bolton?
Yes, I saw, when I was attending the Urban Network in Columbus, the Groundworks folks presented, it was very impressive, and they often cited Cincinnati Public and the preschool promise as helping lead the state on this early childhood. One of the confusing parts is that there's also an environmental group that is very much involved with a number of our schools that are called Groundworks Ohio River or something like that. They're involved at Akin, involved at Lighthouse, involved in JP Parker and a few other places. So we just have to keep the two groundworks separated. One is for preschool and one is for environmental, and both are very expansive and good.
So that would be great, we'd get a written summary. Okay. Okay. So we can move right into our resolutions. Mr. Morosky, please present the following resolution for board consideration.
I do. So I would like to present a resolution in support of changes to Ohio's Ed Choice School Voucher Program. I would like to present it as written, but looking for amendments. I don't know how that goes.
I'll second your-
Okay, I'll present it as written.
Okay.
And second.
It's been motioned and seconded. Now discussion? Yes, Ms. Bates?
Is Mr. Hoying available? My, my thinking is that it would be most effective if we were able to make, to endorse or endorse in part the Dolan Amendment, or something that our legal counsel would be in favor of endorsing that would be beneficial to the district.
Yes, Mr. Hoying.
Yes, friends. Well, this follows a pretty robust discussion we had about the issue in Finance Committee last week. Most of the attention that this Ed Choice Voucher Program has gotten recently is related to the expansion of the number of schools that are considered essentially failing schools, schools where you'd be eligible for an Ed Choice Voucher. So if you, you know, the article in The Inquirer cited that Indian Hill School was included, there was an Indian Hill School, and that was surprising to everyone that Indian Hill would have a school where kids would be eligible for vouchers. Some of our most popular programs are included. Hyde Park, Fairview, Clark, Montessori, SCPA, all schools that in 2019, 20, excuse me, 2020, 21 are included on this list. It's ballooned from 40 districts that are affected to 400. There's more than 1,200 total schools on the list for next year. You asked about the Dolan Amendment, so the Dolan Amendment primarily is, again, reducing the number of schools that are on that list. So it would remove from the list any school unless it has an F on its report card or is in the lowest 10% of performance index schools for two of the last three years. So it will greatly reduce the number of qualifying schools for next year from about 1,200 to about 300, if approved. There seems to be some momentum behind this Dolan Amendment. Both the OSBA and I think OASBO, the Ohio Administrators Association have, have said that it's not everything they want, but that it's supportable. I think important in the Dolan Amendment is it would set aside $10 million of state funding to mitigate the impact to school districts on increased tuition for next year. It would still increase the eligibility, the income eligibility from 200% FPL to 250%. Importantly though, we have been most impacted because of the expansion of Ed Choice Vouchers to students who have never attended public school and with respect, probably had no intent ever to attend public school. That's the group where, I mean, we're spending at least 4.4 million dollars more in tuition funding this year, and that amount is expected to go up again next year. And this, even the Dolan Amendment says that an eighth grade student this year who's entering high school next year would, would still be eligible for a voucher even if that student has not ever enrolled in public school. So we still, I think, even under this Dolan Amendment, probably stand to lose, mitigated perhaps by some of the state funding, that's the $10 million that's been set aside. So, you know, it's, it's, again, I, I think, I can see why OSBA and OASBO, speaking for school districts across the state-
Right.
-think that the Dolan Amendment is an improvement, and certainly it reduces the number of schools that are eligible schools, but it's still going to, this Ed Choice expansion, even under the Dolan Amendment, I think is going to have a significant impact on CPS.
Going to hit us here regardless.
Yeah.
Ms. Bates?
Yes, a couple things. It sounds like the decision's going to be made tomorrow. So as well meaning as, as the resolution is, if we transmitted this tomorrow, it would give no guidance to the legislature. So we could, you know, sit silent on the Dolan Amendment or endorse it, whatever is the pleasure of the board, whatever the recommendation of our legal counsel is, that would be very helpful. But another thing that came up in Finance Committee that Mr. Hoying brought up to Senator Blessing, is that because we're high schools of choice, anyone can get a voucher to get in our, because everyone can claim Withrow or West High as their school. So we may be forced into going back to feeder neighborhood schools to mitigate the effects of this legislation.
Just to add to that, it's not, it's not just Withrow or West High, it's all of our high schools except for Walnut Hills right now.
Yeah. Okay. Anything else, Ms. Bates?
Well, I, I-
What, what are you suggesting?
I'm suggesting, well, Ms. Wagner had her hand up, if we have some, I'm just kind of weighing, you know, if we stay silent, you know, something's going to happen if we say something substantial that will carry some weight. I think that would be helpful to give guidance. I think what we can include in any case is, you know, the issue with our high schools of choice and how that is, you know, working against us when in fact, this whole thing is about school choice, but we may have to limit school choice to deal with this issue of, you know, choice, if that makes sense. I know it makes sense to the board, but I'd like to hear what Ms. Wagner has to say about this.
Ms. Wagner, followed by Ms. Bolton.
I just wanted to remind everybody that this is like insult to injury, since they've frozen our state revenues, but they're increasing the deductions. They're just taking more and more money away from our kids. So just a public reminder.
Okay. Ms. Bolton?
Yeah, I think Bates and Treasurer Wagner raised really good points. First, of course, this is the nuclear option, from a standpoint that the public schools have been fighting back and retrieving much of the market share that we lost in the two decades that this sort of policy's been in existence. And now that we're beginning to, especially CPS, win back the market from the charters and indeed not seeing an increase in the parochial schools, this is the ultimate, how shall we say, assault on the public schools. Also, I think Mr. Blessing also mentioned that unfortunately, if it's coming only from the grade eight, so to speak, the biggest urban districts, that does not necessarily help us with a large portion of the state legislature that is heavy into the suburbs, heavy into rural. So I always worry about where we really can make a difference. There, the Dolan Amendment has come in part because of the suburban districts are being hurt by it. They don't really, the state legislature hasn't cared too much about what happens to us. What I would suggest is, is a, maybe, and this sounds strange, but for the, at least the Hamilton County delegation to both the House, the Ohio House and the Ohio Senate, that there be an email and a phone call from the superintendent, even as bright early tomorrow as possible, saying that we need them to support while it doesn't, it's, it's not the catastrophic thing that the other guy would be doing, but this would be helpful. And I think you're going to have to work, regardless of the Dolan Amendment, working or winning or not, you're going to have to have an amendment that particularly speaks to our situation. I think the Senator was very, very impressed by the fact that we were being hurt, because I'd hate to have to change everything we're doing, because once again, the people in Columbus don't understand what we're doing, or if they do, they don't care. So you can always have an amendment to any kind of legislation or a special piece of legislation. We were able to do it when we, unfortunately, it didn't come through when people thought about it further, when we were doing the seed, whatever, when the state legislature was ready to make preschool not be allowed to be like last dollar or whatever it was. They had to change what we were doing right before we did preschool promise. They had to have a special piece of legislation to allow us to do that. So that kind of special piece of legislation could be helpful, but I think you're going to need that. But right now, I'd say an email directly only to the Hamilton County, both the Senate and the Ohio House people, because Mrs. Bates is right, this is, as Senator mentioned, it's time is of the essence. It's happening tomorrow.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, any other comments? And what is, Ms. Bates?
My question is, are you saying that the superintendent, that this board should take a stance in favor of the Dolan Amendment and direct the superintendent-
To email.
To make the email, make the phone calls and send the emails.
And I don't think it necessarily has to be a resolution, but it could, I think it is a direct, almost emergency kind of thing instead of the, you know what I'm saying? I think the, because the superintendent doesn't do that very often, and I think it makes an impression to do it.
Yeah. I would also encourage, I like the idea of the email, and I think it needs to sound urgent for us as well.
Yes.
I think the, the fact that we are unique with the high schools of choice makes us unique. And so it, maybe in the email, whatever action we take, needs to say that very loudly, clearly, that, you know, with us having high schools, this is, high schools of choice, this is how this action would impact us. Yes.
And, and not to take away from the Catholic schools, as you saw, I'm a product of Catholic schools, so, you know, that's, I don't want to see Catholic schools fail, but the archdiocese already sent a letter in support of the current proposed legislation.
Of course.
And they did an op, somebody did an op.
But we haven't sent anything yet, so I think it's really important that we do.
Good point.
Okay. All right, so-
Seatbelt, seatbelt.
So are we saying that we're not going to do this particular resolution, that what we're going to do is ask the superintendent to do an email? Urgent email?
Emergency, ask the maker of the motion.
Maker of the motion. We, trying to decide the next steps, and since it's your motion, we're suggesting that the superintendent do the email, urgent email to the Senate and House?
Right, in lieu of the-
With Hamilton, Hamilton County? I heard something about Hamilton County, so-
Yeah, Hamilton County delegation.
The delegation.
Okay.
In lieu of the resolution.
In lieu of the resolution and include our position about how high schools of choice-
Yeah, no, that's-
How that impacts-
Fine with me. I'm not as worried about the resolution as I am about something happening. I would also add though, in the last meeting when this came up, I had referenced the superintendent of Forest Hill School District.
Yes.
How he had sent a letter home to every single parent, and I'm not saying we do that by tomorrow, but I'm saying as this shakes out-
Right.
It's not going to go in our favor.
Yeah.
And there are a lot of things happening in Columbus that they don't like to say out loud that involve race, and it's disturbing. I was talking to someone earlier, there's actually been precedent of school districts suing state voucher programs on the basis of civil rights, because the fact of the matter is, we can talk all day and call it suburban versus urban, but we're talking white versus black, and they're coming after black students. And so this isn't going to go in our favor. So I'm, I can shell the resolution, I don't care about the resolution. I think that's smart, I think that's good, but I also do think that at some point perhaps, so we've talked a lot about the community, folks who are here tonight going to talk to city council, one thing this board, I'll give a kudo to all of us, one thing this board has made clear in the past two years is our doors are open and we want to hear from the public, and a lot of the change we've made has been in concert with them, but I think it's time we ask the public to step up on our behalf and tell these people in Columbus to quit telling us what's best for our students, because not only do they not know, they don't particularly care. I'm glad Senator Blessing came to here, but I'm unimpressed. So I do think at some point, we may have to go harder, but I'm fine with rescinding the resolution.
Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Ms. Bolton?
May I also make a suggestion based upon a conversation, that we add besides our Hamilton County delegation, based upon what Blessing said, Peggy Lerner also be in that email, because she's been very supportive of us and will really tie into that unique situation. And I would also add George Lang, who has communicated to me that this voucher thing was a bad idea in its big size.
Yeah.
So I think with those two additions, and if anybody else has some ideas about individuals, but the Hamilton County delegation, House and Senate, George Lang and Peggy Lerner would be the two that I would add outside of Hamilton County.
For adding, I would add Senator Stephanie Coonsy as well.
It's a good idea.
President Jones?
Okay. Ms. Wagner?
I just wanted to remind everybody, we don't, we sent one letter about a month ago, Laura Worley sent it out on our behalf.
Right.
So this will be the second letter with the, talking about the amendment. So it's not, we haven't been quiet.
Okay. Thank you.
Also, this is going to drive up transportation costs, so as we're heading into our budget cycle, we're going to have to make some really tough decisions about where we're going to put our money. Just saying.
Yeah, we could transport them too.
Thank you. All right. Anything else regarding the education voucher? All right. The next resolution being presented, is being presented as a first reading, is that correct, Mr. Morosky?
That is correct.
And no approval of the document is being recommended this evening? So, Mr. Morosky?
Do we not have it?
I thought I-
I don't have it. Yeah?
The resolution on the pre-K?
Oh, Laura hasn't. I don't have it. Pam doesn't have it. Cool, thank you.
That's the, that's the Imagination Library.
Yeah, no, you're right, you're right, you're right, you're right.
What?
I, none of us got it, none of us got it, but I have it, and I can read the entire thing as a first reading. It'll be in our packet for next Wednesday for a vote. I'm proud to say that Board Member Bates' name is also on this resolution with me. It's a resolution declaring support for books for pre-K children living in the Cincinnati Public School District boundaries. I won't read it word for word, because you will get it in your packets, but you'll get the idea. Whereas kindergarten readiness with a focus on early literacy prepares students for a future of success. Whereas reach out and read, Dolly Parton Imagination Library has been shown it can improve kindergarten readiness in children in need by providing anticipatory guidance, et cetera. Whereas children participating in Read Out and Read and Imagination Library have demonstrated 15.4% increase in being on track in literacy in the KRA. Whereas families participating in the program reported 87.6% increase in reading, et cetera, et cetera. Whereas the program sponsorship can serve as a marketing campaign for parents with children living in CPS boundary. Therefore be it resolved, CPS Board of Ed supports the mission, finds it serves proper public purpose by providing children that reside in the district's boundaries age-appropriate books. Be it further resolved, CPS Board of Education approves financial support annually in its budget. This didn't have the, this is the old one. This didn't have the, this is the old one. No, it's not. It's good. In its budget for books and administration of the program to continue to serve children that reside in the CPS school district boundary, as long as the program is proving to be effective, and its express mission of raising kindergarten readiness scores and serving as a valid marketing tool for the district. So that last piece, I would just note, unless you want me to wait for, yeah, it's a first reading, so I would just note that that last piece, Board Member Bates was adamant about. And Michael Fisher at Children's Hospital has added editorially that he wants to actually do even more rigorous evaluation of it. And one last thing I would add is that next week when we vote on this, it would be for the continuance beginning next school year, because I'm happy to say, I was able to get some folks rallied around the cause to cover the $43,000 cost since last we spoke. So this is not for the remainder of this year, it's only for going forward. So next Wednesday, we'd ask for a vote on it.
Okay. We don't need discussion on this, or we, maybe if there are clarifying questions as people review it, that might be wise. Any clarifying questions? I have one. Okay. Again, I want to ask the question, this is because it says any kid zero through, what age? Five? Who live within the Cincinnati district boundaries, but they are not, they're, they, the zero through five, of course, are not students, that's my question, students enrolled in the district?
Well.
And, and secondly, the, the conversation that we had before this, before last week, we had already said that there was 40,000 plus dedicated to this program for the kids that are enrolled. So was that part of this consideration as well?
No, this resolution is expressly for the $128,000 cost going forward, that again, if we commit to, folks at preschool promise and others have intimated that they would even be willing to help cover that cost. So again, it's come down from 330,000 to 128. And no, the children who are zero to three are definitely not our students. Some of the four and five-year-olds may or may not be our students. But again, I would just maintain that the marketing aspect of this, which is why preschool promise has shown interest in it, of being able to reach the families and let them know about all the early childhood educational opportunities, yes, we could probably spend marketing dollars, more marketing dollars, to try to reach those families than we could for $128,000 and improve literacy for 10,000 children living in poverty in our city. So this is for that.
Okay. Any other questions, clarification? Ms. Bolton?
I have, I have a couple. So first of all, in the remainder of this fiscal year, we're not obligated to spend any money. Does that mean through June? Or are you talking in terms of a calendar year?
It's a good question. Through June. So that cost here of the 43, or whatever it was, of $43,000, correct?
Okay. If I could ask a couple more questions. So when, when the fact sheet is, is shared, the term to President's position or suggestion, when it says enrollees, CPS enrollees, we're not talking about enrolled in our district, but enrollees in the.
The program, that's right.
Okay. And so, I mean, we just got through a discussion where the state is asking us to spend more of our money on kids that we don't have in our district, or aren't enrolled. We're now saying, as a board, we're going to agree to spend more money that is, that is perhaps needed by the kids that actually attend our schools. Once again, we're going to give that public money to kids that aren't in our district.
And they're in our district but not enrolled. And I just want to be clear, we're not discussing.
Right.
So you're asking a question.
That's my question, that this is going to be public money. And the enrollee piece, too, is I recall, is really about zip codes, not necessarily attendance boundaries.
Correct.
Okay.
Well, that's, that's how the Reach Out and Read program through Children's has, right. This would be built on that, and they go out into the county, so we're just talking about the school district boundaries. And yes, to answer your question directly, correct, these would, in some ways, yes, what you're saying is accurate.
Go beyond even the district.
But I would, I mean, it's the same thing with preschool promise. I just, I find it hard to see how the opportunity for this relatively speaking low amount of money to bring kids to the district, I don't, yes, you're right, it's for students who aren't in the district, but it's also for students who aren't in school. These are for zero to three, I mean, those are students we really want to reach, and we have an opportunity not only to help their literacy, but bring them to us. So I would maintain that's, yes, you're correct, but I don't, I don't see it quite as the same.
And may I ask, where is this information coming from, and who is it going to? Is it, I'm just asking, is it you, is it a committee? Who's involved in?
We have had presentations.
I know, but I'm asking.
This is all, and it's been in Student Achievement Committee minutes, we've been talking about this for a couple of years.
I know. But does this conversation, is this coming from Student Achievement?
I keep bringing it up, because I think it's important. It came from Student Achievement, yes, last year. And just to summarize again. No, I'd like to summarize again, please. I was told that it didn't have proper public purpose, I was told that it costs too much money, and I was told that it was for students outside the boundary. All three of those have since been taken up, and so I brought it back before the board.
I'm asking that, and we know your position. I'm asking that because I think it's important. I mean, we talk about process, and we've talked about it before, and I thought that we had made, we had decided to proceed from, through this year and through next year. So what I'm trying to understand is, there's, what you're saying, Mr. Morosky, is that there's a way that you'd like to see it funded for all kids, not just our enrollees. And so I just want to be clear what the ask is.
Right, and the reason.
Okay, yes.
Thank you, President Jones. And the reason I'm frustrated is because I, I've made that clear numerous times, and when we had that conversation, when we got to the point where I finally said, I give, because I saw the cost, which has now come down substantially, I made, I made very clear in that meeting, I vividly remember it, because I got some looks, that while it made sense to me financially, I was still disheartened, because the point of this early literacy in zero to three was lost with just on the four and five-year-olds. So while it was nice, and I did, I said, I give, but new things came to light, beginning with Fran DeWine and then Children's Hospital. The whole point of the Imagination Library program is the value of that zero to five. And so.
All right.
I haven't changed my position.
We get that. I understand, and I don't mean any disrespect.
No, I know you don't.
We're, you know, we're restating positions, establishing our position, we're going to have discussion on it next week. So folks just need to read. You have a clarifying question?
Yeah, and the way I saw it is that we, we accepted the recommendation of the administration, but, but the board, you know, delegated it to the administration. What, you know, Mr. Morosky and I are doing now is elevating it to the board level. So it's.
I, that.
That's, which we are, it's appropriate for us to do that.
All right.
Because we didn't vote on it.
We will bring it back for a vote next week. Ms. Bolton, you have a last question?
Probably not a last one, but, but I do think it would be good, we had this, I appreciate what the member Morosky has done in getting the numbers down, and also getting this proper public purpose letter, but if you read the public purpose letter, it really doesn't commit anything. I mean, it even says they're unable to make a legal advisory, advisory to us. It's, and, and we probably need to have general counsel even look at the letter, which they advise in the letter we should do. And there's some reference to, you know, districts make all these kinds of choices all the time. One of the things they say, interestingly, is that we, you know, we decide to spend money on things we're not required to do, and one of the examples is transportation. Well, the state is requiring us to spend money on transportation, so that's not like we have discretion, it's just that we're trying to get our kids, they're free of charge to the family. So I, I just have some concerns. I, just, to my recollection, we had agreed to do this with certain stipulations. And I thought the board had asked the administration to say, to figure out how we could do it. They came back, and we, and perhaps Ms. Bates is right, we didn't necessarily vote, but we were in agreement with how the administration had decided. These are for our children, actually enrolled in our district, meaning they are three and four years old, and that we would pay that, we'd pay that price for the remainder of this particular year. Now, outside negotiations has moved it to where we're not paying for this fiscal, the rest of this fiscal year, but are now being asked to pay for next fiscal year, but under, without those stipulations. I believe that's correct.
That's the ask now, yeah.
So when we get to talk, again, and I, it's hard to say no under these circumstances. One last point, though, is, I'll make that later.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay. So we'll table this, and we'll put it, well, we'll, I'm sorry, we will put this on the agenda for discussion at our next meeting. As a resolution, thank you. Okay, Mr. Morosky, please present the following resolution.
I don't want to. No, I'm just kidding.
No, that's, yeah, that's you.
I'm going to vote against that, too.
Give up?
That one's easy.
Did you flash that?
I'd like to present a resolution, amending board policy 7250, commemoration of school facilities. I'll present it as written.
Is there a second? Any discussion?
Yeah. So this, this was all born out of the Governor Gilligan conversation, and a lot of this was done under Chair Davis's purview last year. And it was one of the first things on our agenda as a policy committee this year, as we move from the 8,000 operations to the 7,000 property. So a lot of this, I think, had been discussed. I do present it as written, but I just wanted the board to be aware, there are substantive changes that I think will help us going forward, namely C, we require written recommendation from the school LSDMC, written recommendation from the community, and written recommendation from public-private partnerships. The board shall approve any commemoration of school facilities. So it kind of, it certainly spells it out far more than it was before.
Yeah. And I think what was stated at the SAC committee, was it SAC or policy? I can't remember. SAC. Something came up that we, the committee assigned to the superintendent in terms of process implementation. So, okay.
Got it.
All right. Yes.
Yes, and I was on the committee when we were developing this policy, and what we found is that we weren't even, the board was not following its own policy. We were entertaining a letter from the Gilligan family, for instance, when input from the community wasn't even part of the policy. And so now, this, this policy is more inclusive than the other policy, which I think is a good thing.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Bolton?
Yes, and prior to going to policy, we had mentioned the issue of, at least I had mentioned any number of times, the problem of gender in the names of our schools, where it's only two and a half women, or, you know, I don't know what the other half looks like, but two and a half women are, because we, two of the buildings share it with either their husband or some other male. So I like the changes that we've made. I just have a question about number C1, written recommendation. The, the policy initially, and I don't know if it's in the guidelines, required that the school kind of agree to it. This policy, as it's written, does not necessarily say that the school has to agree to it, which I think is, is that, was that the intent, or?
I, I think the way I understood it, the way it was communicated to me, is that the board had the final say. So there was a process, and then it came to the board for final review and approval.
And I'm, I'm just saying, the board shall approve any change. I think there's somewhere in here that it does talk about that has to pass the muster with the, with the school, because I'm not reading the written recommendations from the school's LSDMC. That's a recommendation, but it's not binding to us. Schools don't get to make their own name.
Right.
So I think it's, Ms. Bates is right, we've not abided by it, because at least in the last several years, we have appointed, we have chosen names for people that were still alive, Mrs. Ronan, and also Mrs. Spencer. So we weren't abiding by our own board policy, but we knew it when we did it.
So I think.
Well, yes, Blackwell or anybody, so.
Just, just so we can get past this, we have a request in front of us, but we also have this wonderfully written new policy direction, which I think helps us process this. And I, I agree to give to the superintendent what I have, which I will do that. It doesn't tell you much at all, but I think that we'll, we at least will be able to process it in some way, so that we can contact the Gilligans with some. Okay. All right. So there's been, is, there's a motion to approve? Okay, is there a second? We've done discussion. Ms. Wagner, please call the roll.
Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowers?
Aye.
Mr. Lindy?
Aye.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
President Jones? Yes. Ms. Bowers, please present the following resolution for board consideration.
Yes, it's a good abating average. I, I have a resolution amending board policy 8400, school safety. I'm going to read it in its entirety. Whereas the city, Cincinnati Board of Education is reviewing the existing board policies, and whereas the city board of education has determined revision of the current board policies are in order to make them consistent with the current state laws and district procedures. And whereas board policy 8400, school safety, has been reviewed and updated by the administration and the City Cincinnati Board of Education Policy Committee. Now therefore be resolved that the Cincinnati Board of Education approves policy, board policy 8400, school safety as written, and be it further resolved that a copy of the Cincinnati Public Schools board policy 8400, school safety, will be posted online and be retained on file in the office of the board members, Cincinnati Public School, Board of Education Center, Pamela Bowers. I present this resolution as written.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Yes, Mr. Lindy.
Board Member Bowers, could you, this is me as a new board member, trying to learn about how all of this works, are the changes that are in this one, just updating it to be in line with state law, or there are policy decisions that you all thought were also important that are reflected here?
Both, and then wording, bringing it up to date, making it more clear, and, and keeping it in line with state law. So a little bit of both.
I was just interested, and if we're pressed for time, I can, I'm going to vote for it, we can certainly pass on it. I just wanted to know the changes that you all like, are making, that are above and beyond what's required for us to do. I just wanted to learn more about what that was.
Ms. Bates, I'm going to defer to you.
Only because it sounded interesting and important.
I, I don't believe we added substantial policy changes. This is more to align with the law.
With what's required.
And also our practices.
Right, individualized to us.
Right.
I got, that makes sense, that's great. Thank you.
Okay. Any other, any other further discussion? Ms. Bolton?
It would be my interest to send it back to policy, for a couple of, several reasons. What's the status of the No Child Left Behind? What has, is it required by No Child Left Behind? Does No Child Left Behind still exist? I know it doesn't instructionally. Does it exist on safety? So I just think that would be, that would clarify some of this for me. Your point is well taken. Is it because of state law we have to have it, or federal law? That's one thing. I also think there are guidelines or procedures in this policy that should be in administrative guidelines. I'm also worried about one of the categories or classifications in this policy, classifying certain schools as being persistently dangerous. Does that language have to be in there in the policy? Does that language have to be in there in the policy? I mean, I, I would hate to see that list.
Yeah, there, it's on, on the, right, the red line, first, second, third page, after. I, I had similar questions.
It's been in here, it's not like it's an addition. I just think that if we don't have to have that kind of stuff, or if that can be in guidelines instead of policy, that's a, I, I just feel better about it.
Mr. Hoen?
Aye.
Still in the law, in the federal law, the designate, that states have to designate what they refer to as persistently dangerous schools. In Ohio's, since No Child Left Behind was passed, Clinton Administration, I think, no school in Ohio has ever been designated a persistently dangerous school. No school has been designated a persistently dangerous school. Not a single school in the state of Ohio. So it is still law, but it is-
No identification.
Yes, it's, no school has been designated. There are guidelines in Ohio for how a school is designated, but no school has been designated.
Is it, is it required by policy or by, or could it be within guidelines, administrative guidelines? Is it specific that it needs to be policy stated?
I don't believe so. It had been in here. I didn't, I frankly, in reviewing this, didn't want to bring any more attention to it than it needed.
I know, I hesitate, too, but-
Yeah. But no, I, I think it's, it's not a requi, I can double check, but I do not believe it's a requirement of policy that we describe this. It's just in the law, it's, it's a part of the statute.
And my, my last thing is, I don't see in this sort of the tone that we've now adopted in the, what used to be the Student Code of Conduct, now we call it Student Code of Conduct in Support. Then, it would seem to me that this needs to be more, at least addressing the tone that we're trying to achieve, or have been trying to achieve. So I think, totally trust policy to, to make adjustments, but those are some of my concerns about this being passed tonight, and instead, maybe going back to policy to make it have more guidelines, maybe a little bit more of the positive piece, because we're in a very different place than when we first passed this in 2010.
Okay.
Just like to consider that.
Okay.
I don't know if that's ta, I don't know if that's tabling or referring, but it has to-
It wouldn't ha, we wouldn't, we wouldn't act on the resolution, we would send it back at the recommendation of Board Members. Send it back to commute, Committee. I heard four thi, well, three things. One, to better align with the Code of Conduct, provide more guidelines, and review the specific language around the state law.
Persistent something or other.
Yeah, persistent dangerous schools. So, so we're, we're referring it back to policy.
Also the No Child Left Behind.
Oh, the No Child Left Behind, yes.
How much of that do we still have to do? That's stupid law.
Okay, so that's being referred back to policy for that consideration. Okay, anything else regarding that resolution? Okay, Superintendent, do you have a report?
I do have a very short report in addition to the written report. So if there were a headline for this report, it would say, Empowering Community Leaders and World Influencers. Why this is so important is because our strategy plan calls for not only our students, but also our staff members and our community members to be more than contributors, but to be true leaders. So I want to highlight the Geek Squad Summer Academy that is coming to Aiken High School. So it will open in June, in which this program will support students ages 10 through 18. They will learn tech skills, build self-confidence, spark creativity, and discover how technology can benefit them in educational pursuits and their careers. So this really helps our kids get ready for a life beyond CPS and Prepared for Life in terms of creating a geek squad to be able to troubleshoot and fix computers when they are broken. So we're excited about that. Not only are our students world influencers, and that's what we hope and dream for them, but also I'd like to highlight our staff members. And so Sarah Trumbull Oliver, our Chief Strategy Officer, penned a story in E-News, E-School News, highlighting all the ways that Cincinnati Public Schools is ensuring that our school, our students are safe as it relates to the use of technology. And you can see the Board goals that each one of these highlights. In terms of influencers, I also want to highlight the point that we have a very, very generous community. And Give Back Cincinnati dropped into Robert's Academy to paint vibrant murals, and they were for handmade benches, and there are quotes that are put on the walls of the school that are positive, and so that highlights what's happening in terms of our community supporting our schools. And then last but not least, I'd also like to highlight one of our principals who is an influencer, not only in her school, but also within her community, Stacy Hill Simmons, who is the principal of Evanston, was surprised by her family, students, and staff as she was honored as an Educator of the Year from the Cincinnati Association. This was covered by W C P O as well as W L T, W L W T News 5. So that concludes my verbal report in addition to the written report that you have in front of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the recommendations of the Superintendent?
So moved.
Second? Thank you, any discussion? Ms. Wagner, please call the roll.
Ms. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowers?
Aye.
Mr. Lindy?
Aye.
Mr. Morowski?
Yes.
President Jones?
Yes, thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the report of the Treasurer?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Wagner?
I'm sorry, I missed who did the motion.
There was a second and a third.
There was, yeah, two said at the same time.
Pick one of the three.
The B-girls, Bates and Bolton.
There you go, the law firm.
It sounds like a law firm. Okay.
Is this where you wanted me to go over the Moody Report?
The Moody Report? I, I got-
She, she said motion first.
Okay.
Okay. Did you get the motion, Ms. Bates, and the second? Okay. Please call the roll.
Ms. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowers?
Aye.
Mr. Lindy?
Aye.
Are they many now?
Mr. Morowski?
Yes.
President Jones?
Yes, thank you. Are there any inquiries and updates? Ms. Bolton?
I have, I have an update. This came up also in Finance, and I know Ms. Bates is going to DC in the fu, next month, and I'm going this month, and appreciate the Administration preparing my homework for me, and want the rest of the Board Members to receive this homework. You don't have to do it, the Administration does all the work, it's great. But you can see what is gonna be nationally advocated, and I want to find similarities between what NSBA is trying to advocate for and what great city schools are advocating. So for each Board Member, there's that homework. I have also a, not, how shall I say it, an inquiry, too, now that we're through the half of the year, and we've, some of the things that were causing us great efforts by facilities and others, I wanted to receive an update, maybe, maybe this is a, this might be an assignment, this might be an assignment instead of an update.
Okay, anything else? Up, inquiries and updates, Ms. Bates?
Yes, I received the, we all received a copy of Superintendent Mitchell's op-ed. This has not yet been published, right?
Correct.
Can we get this up tonight on IM CPS so we can start sharing it? Because tomorrow, the decision's going to be made in, in some degree. So if we have someone who can get this out there quickly, we can disseminate it to our constituents quickly.
So I, I recollect that the assignment was given last week, last week, yes, by Board Member Morowski regarding an op-ed that had been penned before Lauren Worley left. And so I did share that with the Treasurer as well as General Counsel. Since that time, in conversation with Board Member Morowski, he felt that the resolution was sufficient when we discussed, and we weren't planning now to move forward with the op-ed.
Okay.
When? Oh, sorry. Was before the conversation that we just had, obviously there's no resolution, but I mean, I, I think-
Go ahead.
No, good.
No, I'm good.
Okay.
Okay, so, what was, what's really confusing about all of this, to me, is right now, and, I think we should collaborate, I think this was a communication thing, because apparently, I left the meeting before the assignments were made. And so you made an assignment, but we handled a lot of that in Finance. And then the Superintendent did, what, what I'm saying is, you know, if, if I didn't leave early, I probably would have referred your resolution to Finance, instead of being handled differently. And I think it could have, you know, it, that would be like me taking on a student achievement issue outside of student achievement. So, we could have, if, if it was better coordinated, which is partially my fault, because I didn't catch it, you could have been invited to Finance to help put this all together, you know what I'm saying?
But I wasn't.
I know, and I, and I wasn't aware of the resolution because I left the meeting early. So that's what I'm saying, is that we, especially on legislative matters, we need to communicate with each other a little bit better. I think it ended up well in the end, but then, you know, this, too, is, is part of all that.
Well, and-
Yes.
To, to be clear, so again, to echo the Superintendent, it was, this was something that was already there that Law, so this is not, this was something that Lauren Worley had penned before she left, that I gave the assignment recommending that it come before us today. So this had already been sitting there, this didn't, this already existed, it just hadn't been printed. And so, so now it's here and-
Well, and I guess what I'm saying, if we would have, if, if I would have been more aware, and I'll accept the responsibility that I wasn't-
Me, too.
We could have, together, done this at one time, just, you know. That's, that's what was confusing to me.
What, what do we want to do with it? What, so, I don't know what the recommendation of the Board, it's here, so do we want to send it or not? Yes.
My two cents, if we were not backing the Dolan proposal, which again, is nice, it's milquetoast, but it's nice, if we were not backing that, I would recommend we put this all over our social media, because it's a little harder than a call, hey, let's support this nice Band-Aid. But since we are supporting the nice Band-Aid, I think this would be counterintuitive at this point, because it says two different things. It says, I want to be collaborative with all these suburban districts that all of a sudden care about our kids, because this is kind of more of the middle finger-ish type thing, which I'm good with, as you all know, but I just think it's sense conflicting, I, I don't know if it adds up. I think if we were saying, you know what, Dolan, we want, we want it better than this, that this would make sense, more sense. That's just my two cents.
Okay, so-
Does that make sense?
Yeah, what you're saying makes sense. So, are you comfortable, is our Board Members comfortable with that, not doing this, since we're doing the other one? Yeah, okay. Mr. Lindy, were you gonna comment?
I was gonna agree.
Okay, great, okay. All right, so we're not gonna do this, we'll move forward with the one, the other one. Okay. All right, any other inquiries and updates? I have just a couple really simple reminders. Yes, Ms. Wagner?
Chair Bolton asked me to share this with the public and the Board, I shared it at Finance Committee. But we recently received an annual comment report from Moody's, which is a credit rating agency that we use during our borrowing activities. So every time we have to go for some borrowing, like we did with the cops issue, we purchased, we borrowed money to purchase Mercy and renovate cans, they go through and do a credit analysis. It takes a lot of work, the reports like that thick, and then they issue a credit rating for us so that people would want to invest in us. Well, so now annually, they give an update. And so I'll just read a couple of statements from the annual update that was just issued January 17, 2020. Under Credit Overview, it says the Cincinnati School District has a very high-quality credit position, and its AA2 rating is a little stronger than the US District's median of AA3. Under the Finance section, the District's financial position is healthy when compared to the assigned rating of the AA2. The cash balance as a percent of operating revenues at 30.1% is on par with the US median and grew modestly from 2014 to 2018. Additionally, Cincinnati School District's fund balance as a percent of operating revenues at 40.2% is stronger than any other Moody's rated school districts nationwide. Although our, we have a high debt ratio because we are required to recognize the pension as a debt, the pers, this percentage has declined from 2014 to 2018. We're making good payments on our facility master plan debt payments. And so I'll send copies over for everybody to review, but this is a really good report for us, so congratulations.
Yes.
All right, congratulations.
That's good news. We need good news, yes.
Thank you. Okay, any other inquiries and updates? I, I have just a couple real simple ones. One is, we're still trying to, our staff is still trying to complete the graduation schedule. I believe we have, how many schools? Four, that need to be assigned. Some people, usually, a few of us do three. We ask that everybody does at least two, but then there's always some additional schools. We're, we have tons of schools, okay? So please, check your calendar and see if you can add one, that would be great, and let, and you can call Phyllis to find out where the need is, so please, we can get that taken care of. All right, and then also in your packet, you receive the information requested regarding the Harvard Professional Development, and with the numbers, and as you can, if you had a chance to look at it, we exceeded the budget, but we, I remember in Committee, there was conversation about whether or not that could be subsidized by the grant that Superintendent spoke about. The issue now, the situation right now, is that there probably needs to be a decision made fairly quickly for those who want, who intend to go. Is that correct, Ms. Davis? Because you've been in communication with them, and they are saying, confirm as soon as possible. So I guess I'm asking what the next step is, and I'm, I'm kind of looking at the Superintendent just in terms of finding out about the, the grant, whether or not that could subsidize.
So I, I don't believe that I have the total amount that's currently uncovered. Is that correct, Phyllis? Okay. All right, so if I could get the, the amount that is the gap, then I can see if I have funds to be able to cover it using grant dollars.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
And I'm not sure that this is, yeah, I mean, our fiscal year ends at the end of June, and I know one of my meetings is this fiscal year, one's next fiscal year, so this has to be figured in that way, because the, this conference is next fiscal year, so.
Okay.
Yeah, but a lot of work is finished, all you have to do is kind of divide it up, because it's, it's obvious by the dates where they fall, but-
Okay. All righty, so we'll, we'll ask our staff to work on that and get it to the Superintendent. Okay, assignments?
You're, you're remembering one for me.
Me?
Yeah, you even wrote it down, Madam President.
I don't know if I wrote it down, I'm, I'm sorry.
It might have been about Workforce Council.
Yes, that's what it was. What was the assignment, Ms. Bolton?
We have to just make sure that, that we took the proper vote to endorse the charter. I think it was presented, Administration's had it- I think it was presented, administration's had it, and I think it was presented as one of the action items or assignment items in one of the SAC minutes. And if that will suffice versus actually having a vote specifically as, on a charter, then everything's fine.
Was there in SAC? Yes.
That's exactly what happened.
Okay.
It was on the infamous SAC meeting, I believe. I believe, I believe it was one of those. In all seriousness, though, I do, that's when it was.
It's official and it's done.
Correct. Yes.
Great. And it's in the hands of the administration and the Workforce Development Council now. I know they're already taking action on stuff, so thank you.
Thank you.
I just didn't know.
Yep. Any other assignments? And then I need to go back to inquiries and updates. Go ahead.
I just have an assignment. It's sort of an inquiry, but it requires an assignment. As we were building Stargill and we were negotiating with the community, it was determined, and I believe it still is in the determined pile, that we would be using part of Stargill's hallways or walls or what have you for two purposes. One was the athletic history of CPS when we were even a segregated district to where we became an integrated district. Our athletic history is phenomenal, whether it's the horrible Berlin Olympics, some of our boys from Walnut were competing, or whether it's the first African-American to compete in the World Olympics, it was also CPS, or whether it's a world-class boxer or whatever. So I'd like to kind of get a report back as to where we are on that. And then the other piece was out in the surrounding area on the, I don't know, the entrance to Stargill. It was determined and discussed that there would be also something celebrating the community of the West End. And one of the things I think that was decided is that there's a storied history of education reform in the West End, both in our segregated schools, but also the first public Montessori school at Sands, starting in the West End. There's a tremendous big history of education in the West End. And it was talked about not being a mural, but one of those kind of freestanding glass with the history that people would have access to. So if we can, I know everybody's been busy with just trying to get schools open and classrooms fitted, but now maybe we have a little bit of a breather, not much, to at least see what we can do to honor that commitment to the community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other assignments? I do have, I neglected in inquiries and updates to remind board members to sign your conflict of interest and party disclosure form and return it to our staff. Be good if you could do that tonight. Okay. Anything else? Okay. Having no other, having no other business before us, the meeting is adjourned. I hear what everybody else is doing. Let's go. Yeah.